Are we live at this point?
Yep.
It does feel like we were just here, I just want to say that. Alright, we got everybody, it is six o'clock, so let's rock and roll. Alright, so, good morning, or good afternoon, good evening, let's try to dive in, it's been a long day already. So today is eighteen November at six oh one, and we'll open the meeting starting with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance, suit and flag, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Johnson, will you do your call, please?
Mayor Hibbin.
Here.
Councilmember Bryan.
Here.
Councilmember Glazer.
Here.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Councilmember Swenson.
Here.
Financial Consultant Laurie Ayer. Say here. We'll say she's here. And then Bruce Kim.
Here.
Hi, everyone.
Lieutenant Paul Mangere.
Here.
And myself Natalie Johnson, your call is continuing.
Okay, so before we go into approving the agenda, just talking over some of the items that have changed that we need to address. Four C, there was two date changes, we do have a new form with you on that. Four K, we need to talk about, so my recommendation is it's removed, and it's edited very end, if we make it nine G. You do have some additional information in your, that was just given to you for number three, for the elders' presentation. And then last but not least, there's two additional items for, in the nine for new business, it would be nine E, it's the retirement, and nine F is permission to post the position. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Glazer.
May I also request that we move four N to new business for discussion, please?
Four M?
Yes, sir.
Move to new business, so four M would then become?
Nine H.
Nine H, okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Anybody who'd like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I move the agenda as amended.
Second.
Good, let's move it to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, agenda is approved. The next thing we have is a public forum, Ms. Johnson, did anybody sign up for a public forum?
Yes, Representative Matt Mott.
Sir. Will you please state your name and your address?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, Representative Paul Mott and Mel River. And just want to make contact with the city council and staff, and remind you that this year it will be a short session, it's a second year of the Biennial, we will not start until February seventeenth, which is six weeks short of the first year of the Biennial. So, that being said, if you have any legislative action that you want done, anything that you need, something drawn up on, we'll need to get that done sooner than later, and you'd best to avoid waiting till late January to start applying for this. So if there's some language that you'd like to see drawn up, please let me know now, and I can start working through visor and doing them. I don't know if you're going to be giving any bond requests or anything like that, but that, as I said, needs to be applied for some later. Also, keep in mind that the state's currently a hundred and sixteen million dollars in the red, and that is a trend that has been continuing, I don't see that thing getting better anytime soon, so this is my fancy way of saying, we don't have any money, if you have something that you need to be fixed in language or commission, you can do that, but it's going to be a request for more funding, but probably not going to be something looking out for this year. Staff, any questions?
Is there any other updates you'd like to share from legislature that would be useful to the Nowland residents, that would be beneficial? I know there's a lot of things going on.
It's, as far as relative to Nowland, really, that I can see coming down the line that would affect us. I'm not seeing any changes in the plans for Metro Pat and Met Council. I believe that Oak Grove and Nowland will maintain their status exactly, I don't see that changing.
Mr. Mayor. Representative Mott, do you know if there's any, any new updates or word on the zoning bill that's been, zoning bills that have been trying to come up for the last couple of years regarding lot sizes, especially particularly in the metro area? And allowing smaller lots, and especially rural communities within the Oka County, does that would affect Nowland?
That's what I was just referring to, I don't see that changing.
That one's probably not going to come up, okay?
Yeah.
So that one probably is not, that's not probably going to come up, and then the exemptions that the city of Nowland has with Met Council?
Yes.
Okay, cool, great, thank you.
Any other questions for Representative Mott? Sir, thank you very much for coming in and giving us some update, that's awesome. You're definitely welcome, anytime. Alright, anybody else for public forum? We're supposed to open it, now I'm going to close the public forum. Okay, so we can move on to agenda item number three, the elders' presentation, Bruce, the floor is yours.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Bruce Kimmel with elders. And I'm pleased to give you a brief overview of today's bond sale that we conducted on behalf of the city. I'll just be referring to a few points in the sale, excuse me, sale day report that I believe Natalie handed out before the meeting. So the first thing you might notice is that the final par amount of the bonds will be one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's the number that is also reflected in the award resolution that you will consider after this presentation. You may recall that we were authorizing, or went out to bid with a little over one point four million dollars, but due to the premium bid that was received as part of Baird's winning proposal, and I'll talk more about that in a moment, we were able to reduce the par amount of the bonds by one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So, that's why the par amount is lower now, but please know that the funding amounts for the 2024 street project, the twenty-five street project, and the equipment acquisition are all just as they were authorized back in October. Moving on to the competitive sale results, we did receive six bids on the city's behalf at ten thirty this morning. As I mentioned, Baird was the winning bid with a true interest cost of two point nine six percent. That's over seventy-five basis points better than what we had projected in our pre-sale report, or point seven five percent. You know, we try to be a little bit conservative, i.e. high in our interest rate estimates, but today's performance by the city really outstripped even our cushion that we had built into our numbers, you really had an outstanding result. And actually, all six bids were quite strong, even the last place bid would have been at three point one four percent, again, as opposed to where we were at in our estimates, somewhere around three point seven five percent. I won't go through a whole lot more here on this page, again, just wanted to note that we are reducing the bond size, and the bonds will be callable in 2034 and thereafter. So any remaining bonds could be either paid off or refinanced after February one of 2034. Moving on to the bid tabulation, I just wanted to point out that winning bid from Baird and a syndicate of many other investment banks, that's what Baird's sort of standard operating procedure is, is they work really well with a whole bunch of other banks to put together very aggressive bids on competitive sales like this. And so it wasn't surprising that they were the best bid of the six received. I also wanted to note the coupon rates and the yields in the two center columns. You can see that you'll be paying coupons of mostly five percent on this bond issue, but the true yields on the ten maturities range from two point six percent up to just over three percent. And so, as we discussed in October, it's really that differential between the coupon rate and the true yield on those maturities that dictates how much premium Baird offered in their proposal, and that we were able to use to reduce the bond size. And then if you go down through the next, the rest of this page, and then the next page, you can see how pretty tight the bidding was for places two through six. We also include a couple of pages of final debt schedules. We'll be giving Lori and Natalie much more detail for each one of these sub purposes, so that in paying debt service and making sure that the assessments are being accounted for the way they should be for the two street projects and all that good stuff, there's, there's much, much more detail than what we show here. But I did want to just reiterate again, even with the smaller bond amount, because of that re-offering premium via deposits to the construction fund, or rather, for the street projects, really reimbursing the city are exactly where you wanted them to be. And I would note that overall, for the entire bond issue, the total debt service will be about eighty-five thousand dollars less than what we originally estimated. So that's essentially eighty-five thousand dollars less tax levy over the ten-year term of the bond issue. And then finally, Mayor and council, I did just want to note the S and P rating. As you are probably aware, S and P affirmed the city's double A plus rating with flying colors, and assigned you a stable outlook on that, and your team did an excellent job. We had Lori, Natalie, and the mayor on the rating call, and they all just did an outstanding job of describing the city's financial management practices, the strength of your local and regional economy, the fact that you do have just, you know, nice steady demand for the large acreage lots that you have to offer in Nowland, but that you're not going to be blowing up into a big city anytime soon. And really, S and P had no qualms or concerns about affirming that double A plus. And as you know, that is basically the second best rating you can possibly have, with triple A being the very highest. And so for a relatively small community, especially a small community with, you know, limited commercial tax base, having that double A plus rating is really outstanding, and congratulations to all of you on the council, and to your staff on that affirmation. So with that, I would welcome any questions you have, Mayor and council, about the bond sale process, the bids received, the final debt service schedules, or the rating. And if you don't have any questions, or after we answer questions, then I would invite you to take up the resolution from your bond council, and that is officially awarding the bonds, as they've been resized, to Baird and proceeding to closing. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any council members have questions for Bruce?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Swenson, go ahead, please.
I just have a curiosity question, this is more about the process. You know, I've not been through a bond sale like this, but it sounds, from the way that you guys are talking about it, like you didn't expect it to be this competitive with as many bids as we got. And I'm curious if that is reflective of credit worthiness of our city, or if it's more reflective of the state of the economy, that a bond seems like an investment to compete over? I guess I'm asking that, because if we carry that double A rating, or even triple A rating, you know, into the future when we bond, can we expect similar rates, or is it more to do with the economy?
Yeah, great question, councilmember, it's a little bit of everything. We're seeing a fair amount of volatility in the markets these days, in terms of how many bids a given issuer will receive. And if you had just asked me to predict, I would not have, I would not have predicted six very strong bids here, despite the city's very strong credit rating, just because it's really been variable. And I think there's a lot of investors and bankers that are trying to figure out what the right rate assumptions are for the future, given, you know, uncertainty with the Federal Reserve and with the overall economy. For sure, though, your double A plus rating was a big help. I think that if you had had a, you know, double A minus rating, which would have been two notches lower, or an A rating, which is still, you know, investment grade, there's nothing wrong with an A rating, and then been trying to sell a relatively small bond issue like this one, I don't think you would have had as many aggressive bids as you received. So, you know, the fact that you had, again, a relatively small bond issue didn't seem to hurt you in today's market, and I would have to chalk that up to your credit rating. Now, in terms of, you know, future bond issues, whether it's two years from now or whenever, you know, of course, there's bigger factors at play in deciding what the, that the market uses to decide what interest rates they want. We do expect rates to generally stay stable or to decline over the near term, again, because of worries about the economy and overall growth. But there's other factors in the world that could cause interest rates to go up too, right? So it's pretty hard to predict. That said, I would say that even with the increase in rates that we saw over the last year or two, bond rates didn't go up as much as some other lending rates did, like for commercial loans or residential loans. And that's because there's this inherent imbalance of supply and demand. There's more demand for muni bonds than there is supply. So there's always going to be more people looking to buy these bonds than there are new bonds being sold, and that benefits cities like Nowland, right? Because you get to take advantage of that relative imbalance, and that helps to keep interest rates down as well. So that was a long answer, but hopefully that gave you some context into what was going on in the market.
Thank you. Bruce, I did have one question, that's, I know we've got a very good rating of double A plus, but what does it take to get to triple A plus? What should we be doing?
To triple A, it's really not feasible for the city of Nowland to get a triple A. You're doing everything you possibly can, really, within reason, to, to hold on to and stabilize and really enhance that double A plus. And S and P changed its methodology a few years ago to basically make it impossible for small communities like Nowland to have a triple A. It's, I guess, maybe not impossible, but you would have to up your reserve levels to insane levels that wouldn't make sense in order to even have a chance, and I would never recommend that you do that. You know, I think you're doing things right as it is, and you're served very well with this double A plus rating.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other questions to Bruce? Hearing none, somebody make a motion for the resolution.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I approve, I move that new approved resolution awarding the sale of general obligation bond series twenty twenty twenty-five A in the original aggregate principal amount of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, fixing their forms and specifications, directing their execution, and delivering and providing for their payment.
We'll second your motion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I just thank you, staff, for doing all this, it's a lot of work, so thank you.
Okay, we'll move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, we got one day, motion carries.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can just say one last thing before I go. You know, I don't get to work with the city of Nowland that often, but this was a great experience, and you really do have an awesome tag team with Lori and Natalie. I work with some other communities that have contract financial officers, and let me just say that they're not usually as responsive and as on it as Lori is, so it's really been a pleasure working with her and with Natalie and all of you. So, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Bruce, thanks for giving very nice comments. Okay, moving to the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rainbow.
I motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Got a second? Got a second? Any discussion? Nope, we'll move to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, consent agenda as amended. Alright, we'll move on to number five, which is engineering. So we got Shane Nelson on, if you can take a leave, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this first item is a resolution for acceptance and release of the letter of credit for the Nowland Pastures Development. So the Nowland Pastures Development was a little bit unique, and really the only improvements was establishing vegetation, and then also demarcating the edge of the wetland buffers as required by city ordinances and upper realm river watershed rules. So with that, we are, I visited the site, the signs are up, there's turf is established. So we would recommend that the city accept this and release the letter of credit at this time. And I just want to point out that the development agreement did originally include a provision, kind of the city's standard provision, for a two-year warranty period, which if the city approves this resolution as written, the city would be waiving that, because we really don't have any permanent infrastructure, and therefore, the two-year warranty period is really not necessary.
We have any questions for Shane on this requested council action?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
If there are no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution releasing the financial security for Nowland Pastures.
Second. Got a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Alright, Shane, back to you.
Mr. Mayor, this next item is an annual opportunity for the public to comment on the adequacy of our SWIP. So this is just really a formality. At this time, I'd ask that you just open it up to the public, if there's anybody that wishes to speak on our stormwater pollution prevention program, we just listen and take notes. If nobody speaks about our stormwater pollution prevention program, we just move on to the next item.
Alright, so we'll move to open forum for the stormwater pollution prevention program, would anybody like to speak on that? Hearing none, we'll close the open forum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Natalie, if you could just note in the minutes that nobody spoke on that item, and that will fulfill our requirement for this year for that item. Now, this next item is a little bit more interesting, so this item is for approving the submittal of the MS four petition for reevaluation. So kind of the short story is that Burns Township was originally pulled into the MS four program because we were defined as an urban area in the 2010 census. The census, as you know, was redone in 2020, and they, new maps were made available by the US Census Bureau, in which the city of Nowland is no longer defined as an urban area. And just for point of clarification, previously, we just had, just along Rogers Lake, we had one little strip along Rogers Lake which was defined as an urban area, which kind of pulled the whole city into this program. So now with the, with the updated census, we are no longer a city of five thousand or more or defined as an urban area with the, as defined by the US Census Bureau. So we may be eligible for deregulation under the program. Dwayne Duncanson, the stormwater supervisor, actually called me and kind of went over this with me, that the MPCA has created their own form, which is attached in the council's packet, and it basically states the reasons that we're requesting this deregulation. So from my perspective, there's really no downside in submitting this deregulation form. If we're successful, the benefit is that we no longer have the ongoing cost associated with the stormwater program, we're no longer mandated to do them, and the city can always choose if you, if there's some components of your stormwater program that you want to continue, you can always, you know, do that by free will instead of by mandate. So with that, I guess I'll stand for questions, but our recommendation is the city council approve, submit all of this form. Mr. Mayor, that would require your signature, and then this form would be sent to the MPCA. We think it's going to be about a sixty-day process for them to review, they might do like a public notice, and then we anticipate hearing from them sometime within the next couple of months.
So I hear from the council, are there questions for Mr. Nelson?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Thank you, to Shane, so if we're successful in this, how does it relate to us as far as any reduction in expenses associated with the MS four permits?
Yeah, so the MS four permit, or the program, costs roughly twenty thousand dollars per year, so potentially reduce expenses by twenty thousand dollars per year. Now, the city may want to continue doing some of those things, like, you know, doing some annual pond inspections, some annual storm sewer inspections, so you may want to continue with certain, certain components of your program, you just won't be required to do all of them.
Thank you.
Shane, can you come back to the recommendation on what you believe would make sense for us to continue, and then we can talk about what those costs would be, I think that would be helpful?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Mayor, assuming we're successful, I think that would be the next step. If we receive that notice from the MPCA saying that we are released from the permit program, then we could then talk to the city, or talk to the council about what we believe, or what we think you might want to consider moving forward. We still think permitting programs and permitting processes are important, but we could certainly talk about changes that would make it more streamlined, less burdensome on your residents, and quite frankly, just less paperwork that's currently required.
I think that would be great, is there any other questions for Ms. Nelson? Councilmember Rainbow.
I guess I, am I correct in assuming that until we hear differently, that we've been accepted, we will continue with what we're doing, and not wait to hear and then have to backtrack?
Correct, we're doing nothing until we hear from Shane on the MS four application for reevaluation.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Ms. Swenson.
Shane, I did have a couple of questions on that, from some other people, about the Boss Street project, and whether or not this could affect that. And if you hear back before they start construction, will that change some of the costs for the stormwaters on Boss Street?
I don't know if it will cost, or if it will change. I don't know that we're going to be able to move that quickly. We still have ordinances that are, that require certain things under the MS four program. I don't anticipate, you know, after we hear back from the MPCA, we may consider revising our ordinance requirements, but that's not occurred yet. So I don't know that, you know, at this point in time, our regulations are still the same.
So I'm hearing no impact at this point?
Yeah, really, I think the only, as it relates to Boss Street, I think the only thing that might, you know, potentially go away would be our requirement to do the annual pond inspections. And that's, you know, that's just kind of an ongoing cost, it's not related to the construction cost.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Nelson on the MS four petition?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Swenson, I move to approve the submission of the MS four petition for reevaluation.
We'll second your, your motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's move to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the fire department, chief is not able to join us tonight, he's got conflict, so I'll just give you the overview, total of twenty-one calls, four were fired. You can see most of the other ones were all medically related. In October, the department concentrated skills training for forcible entry with power equipment and ventilation. These skills allow the fire department to enter residential building, industrial areas, and agricultural structures where keys are not readily available, and time is of the essence to mitigate any issues. They also completed final training burn, and completed the burn down of the house on the one hundred and eighty-first Avenue with successful training, provided opportunities for the firefighter personnel and mutual aid. personnel and mutual aid partners in the area. They also interviewed firefighter candidates for the fall hiring program. So they're still in process of that. They've moved several candidates into the evaluation portion, which is great news. They've significantly, they've had, the Now Then Fire Department has significantly reduced the calls from the bar none facility in the last six months and are averaging 4.5 calls per month. This is in comparison to 2.2 calls in the second half so far. So now they're at 2.2 calls. Just the way that's written is a little funny. Okay, any questions on the chief's update? Okay, next thing is, that was a monthly report talking about, and Lori, I'm going to lean on you a little bit on this, just talking about it. So it's the increased benefit level for the statewide volunteer firefighter plan. Do you want to, are you up to speed on this, Ms. Yeager?
Yes, I am. So the para sends out a report on where cities are regarding what their balance is in the para fund that they have. And currently, the para fund for the city of Now Then is overfunded. So, and you're, you will get, you will continue to get state aid every year and it's overfunded because the benefit that the firefighters get is lower than a lot of the other cities that are in the para plan. And so by increasing their benefit in the future, it will allow you easier access or easier ability to recruit firefighters by giving them a better benefit. And it's just a nice way for recruiting and you have plenty of funds in there to cover an increase in the benefit that the chief is recommending. So you won't have to continue, you won't have to contribute any more than you're already contributing, which is $7,000, and you will continue to have a surplus in that fund into the future.
Okay, just one question I have, and I did ask the chief, I says, what does it cost in Now Then? He said, it's no additional cost. What do we currently donate per firefighter to, from the city of Now Then, from the Now Then funds? Whether it's general fund or if it's budgeted, what is that amount, you know?
It's $7,000 is what the city contributes to that fund. And it's not per firefighter, it's just a flat amount.
And it's going to stay at $7,000 even with the census?
Yep. Yep.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Swanson.
If we didn't do anything and the surplus continued to grow and just sit there in our para fund, what would happen? Would we potentially get a reimbursement of that as a city?
No, no. It just, it would stay in the para fund and it would continue to accumulate unless, you know, they have, you know, it's always, it's market driven. So they do invest, investing and so forth for their members. And, but, but the benefit that is paid out would not change. And I think you would have a harder time recruiting firefighters with such a low benefit. By increasing the benefit, you're gonna, you're gonna get some better responses in the future.
And you've reviewed our funding level and you're confident that raising it by that amount is not going to put us in trouble in the future?
Yep. I'm very confident. It looks really good. I mean, it's a very high percentage. I don't have it right in front of me, but I can certainly pull it up while you can move on and then let you know how overfunded you are.
Ms. Yeager, can I, one more question. I know the number of firefighters we have is pretty low right now and I'm very much in support of the fire department, but what if the number of, we get to our maximum level of firefighters, does that start costing the city more at that point? So right now, I'd say we have 12, but we're allocated up to 25. Does that change the plan actually if we go to the 25 people?
Right. You know, you have the, you have the capacity in the para fund to support 25 firefighters at the higher benefit level.
Perfect. That's the piece that I was missing from reading this. All right, any other questions for Ms. Yeager?
Well. Mr. Mayor, if there is no other discussion, I would make a motion to increase the benefit level for the statewide volunteer firefighter plan by approving resolution 2025 option to increase the benefit level for firefighters who are vested in statewide volunteer firefighter plan.
Second.
I think you could have a lot of seconds on that one. I don't know who got it first, but somebody seconded. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All right, let's move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Unanimously. All right, perfect. Thank you for the explanation on that. All right, so the next one is a book for the resolution approving to purchase Paratec Rescue Tools from Cleveland. Anybody know what page that one's on? 104? Okay, so this is the one that chief had talked about. He's got the item budgeted. He would be telling us if he was here on page 104. It's just under $20,000. He's got the updated quote on it. And page 107 is a resolution. Do we want any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Probably a question for Clark Johnson. So we're saying we're purchasing the equipment for, you know, 1997-90. Is that considered the capital outlay on the general fund for the fire department?
I believe Lori and I, we are taking it out of firefighter, right?
Yeah, well, this is the fire department.
Well, I know, I'm sorry, the fire department. We were taking out a fire department and the siren we are taking out of capital.
And it's, so, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll clarify that. It's the siren, it comes out of general government in the, in the general fund. And the firefighter equipment comes out of the fire fund in the general fund.
Okay, so we're talking right now, the Paratec Rescue Tools, it's coming out of fire fund and that's what I remember chief.
Yes, that is.
Has it, your question? No, it does not.
Okay.
Was there some other capital outlay for, for $3,000? I'm just trying to, that already occurred this year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there's something else?
Yes, there is. There's $3,400 in there, I believe, or 30. Yes. Yep.
So that are going to be over budgeted on the fire department for 25?
That is correct.
By $6,000-ish dollars?
That is correct. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when we look at budget, we look at not only department level budgeting, but we also look at total general fund. And your total general fund is about $100,000 under budget in 2025. So we have the ability to move money. You also have a $10,000 contingency budget that you have not used in 2025. And so you're, you have the ability to move that. I'll come with a resolution moving budget from budgets that are under to budgets that are slightly over. So I would, I would move $6,000 into the fire fund to cover that additional expense. And you would still be under budget totally for the entire general fund.
Councilmember Ryan, you have more questions? Ms. Yeager.
That's good for now.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
And I would just say to what Lori said is that that is something we've done before. At the end of the year, when this one's a little bit short, we grab from here and the ones that will be short.
I understand that. I'm just trying to understand when we're looking at one thing and it's saying it's coming out of the fire fund balance, but it's also coming out of somewhere else. That isn't explained anywhere. So I'm just trying to clarify so I'm, so it's, so the numbers match up.
I understand that, yeah. But we're not doing anything different as far as at the end of the year and moving from one.
We're doing it a little early, but we're also taking, I'm going off of that documentation. It says there's enough balance to cover it, which it's, it's not, so.
Just bring that up because I didn't read that in the brief. Okay, any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Make a motion to approve the resolution to purchase the Paratec Rescue Tools.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Rayville. Any other further discussion for the vote? Hearing none, it's an affirmative vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And I think it carries that one. Next one, is that page 108? Ms. Johnson, you want to explain this one? I know chief did talk to me about it.
He did. And after we were doing some of the numbers and we're talking with Lori is what we would do is purchase a siren this year, but the electric, because we're getting so late into the year, the install would happen next year in 2026. And it would come from general government, not the fire department, because we kind of determined it's a general government item. It really isn't a fire department item.
Public safety, not a fire.
Correct.
So just clarification on it. The siren itself is $14,925 and then the installation is $25,000.
Correct.
So, and this is a question for Ms. Yeager and Ms. Johnson. So if we purchase the item, yes, that can go through with funding this year, but if the installation's not going to take place until next year, how does funding roll from one year to the next if it's, you know, we're saying, hey, we're going to pay for this, but it's not paid for and we'd actually pay for the installation 2026? Can you guys describe how that works on the city side? I do not know.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's, so it would be a new budget item in 2026. And so I've amended the 2026, the 2026 budget to include that capital expenditure in 2026. The other option, instead of paying it out of the general fund, would be to pay it out of your capital improvement fund, which you have funds available there, since it is more of a capital improvement than just a general fund improvement. So it's a, it's an item that we can discuss next week and you can decide at that point where you want to pay for it. But it would not roll over. There would be no rollover of any funding from 2025 to 2026. It would be a new item.
In this case, we would be purchasing a $15,000 siren and doing the install next year. So we're paying $15,000 this year and you'd be paying $25,000 next year.
That's correct.
That's the piece I was missing out on.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Blazer. So the first question I have, is this in addition to the siren that you all wanted to budget for in 2026? Is this a second siren or is this the siren that you're budgeting for?
I believe that it was this, the siren that you guys had talked about, I think it wasn't at that meeting, and that he was told to try to figure out money in his budget to be able to do it. And then after talking to Lori and she was, her telling us that we didn't really need to take it out of the fire department, we were able to find this one. I think when we met Mr. Mayor, he said the city is supposed to have them out six, is what the report said, and that hadn't changed from the last one. But it's going to take us time to be able to install those and find the locations that we can actually put them where it'll affect people.
So this report that keeps getting talked about, is, I haven't seen this report. Is this, is this an updated report that's provided to us by the manufacturer that does the pre-vehicle studies?
It is the same report and he went through it with them and they said that report was still relevant. So I haven't.
I think it's a report that's a couple of years old, Councilmember Blazer. I've not seen it either. Just from what chief said, it's, there's not any, what they do. There's something from two, I'll say two years ago. My number could be off.
I think it's, I think it was like 2018.
So 2018?
18 or 19. But they did, yeah, they weren't going to update it at that point.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Blazer. Something that I'd like to point out is that the discussion, in the discussions where we're asking questions of the chief in regards to what the current cost of installing emergency weather sirens is, this is, this is 33% more than what we were told at, we were told approximately $30,000, this is going to be $40,000. I'm curious as to why the site of Twin Lakes Park has been chosen when it's less than, it's, I think it's 2.2 or just over two miles from the fire station and we have other areas that if we're truly underserved with emergency weather sirens that are further from city center. And again, I guess I'm going to comment on this, is have we reached out to the county in regards to their digital services that they provided to see if that's an alternative to spend $40,000 for a weather center?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Ms. Nelson.
We are, and we just, I believe, got hooked up with the county yesterday, yesterday or this morning. I don't recall. It'll be in your Friday update and they're asking us what items we want to go out and our residents will be able to hook up to a digital response to their phones. And again, that's like brand new. We were working on it yesterday.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have another question then. So I'm assuming that, well, there could be a fluke weather incident in the wintertime where an emergency weather siren was immediately out. My, to my knowledge, I've only experienced true weather indication, you know, weather indications with sirens in the, you know, spring, summer, maybe very early fall. Would this be something better to wait on, table and see what the county has to offer and what the response from residences? Before spending $40,000?
Go ahead, Councilmember Swanson.
Yeah, I was learning the same thing today because I remember we had quite a discussion about the emergency phones or the, you know, relying on that. And I actually, I read a few articles that referenced a few studies. I didn't read the studies, but they talked about how without multiple, sirens or weather warnings are more effective if you have more than one. And so if you just have it go off on your phone, you're not necessarily going to run for the basement, but if you hear the siren too, you're far more likely to go in the basement. And one of the articles was referencing that giant tornado that went through Joplin 15 years ago, 10 years ago, and how many of the, they found, well, the article said they found people holding their cell phones and they didn't go to the basement. They're just like running off their cell phone or something. So I think it would be good to look into the emergency thing through Oak County. I think we should do that, but I don't think that relieves us of the need of a siren because I think the two together is more effective than warning people into the basements.
So just to add on, that's what chief's comment was, it's redundancy is multiple years. It's not a one specific item when you look at public safety. I want to go back to your question. You asked a question, is this the same one? I think we got, I don't know that it's the same one or if it's a different one. I think chief said this was an additional one, is what he told me.
Okay, I may have misunderstood.
So I think that your question is very valid and yes, I'm going to say that. Chief told me, because I asked the same question, is this the same one or is this an additional one? He said, well, we could do one this year because we have the funding available, which we're, we're learning that funding is available, we shift around the budgets. But it was not the same one in the budget of 2026. So you can clarify that point. That's what chief told me. Ms. Councilmember Rayville.
To Councilmember Blazer's question about why Twin Lakes, I asked that of Natalie, did we own Twin Lakes and order to put a siren in any other location in Now Then? We are going to have to get permission from landlords, which means contracts, rental, just like the cell tower that we've got in our property to sell the other grounds. We would have to get that approval from wherever we would put it other than on Simpsons. And our only other issue we've gotten is Twin Lakes.
There was more to that, I would add to that. So one, it was we own the property. Two, you can put electrical there. And three, it was the other greatest area where people would come to be, was the third one.
Yeah, there's a park that comes. Summer, tornadoes and weather.
Again, that's what chief shared.
And to add to that, Mr. Mayor, I believe it was the, the siren here hits the park, hits for heritage, hits for all the softball games and all the stuff that goes on on Wednesday nights. It also hits the rushing show. And that was part of the discussion is Twin Lakes gets the most population of residents and others that wouldn't necessarily hear it on their phone if they were in the water or in a phone store.
Can I go back to what Councilmember Blazer said? So if we look at this one and say, yeah, we invite now, is this the one for the 2026 budget? So Ms. Yeager, is there another one in the budget for next year? Can you clarify, Councilmember Blazer's question?
Right, no, not at this time. I misunderstood. I thought that this was the same siren that we were discussing. So I excluded the other one in the 2026 budget.
Thank you for clarification. So we're talking one siren and that's what we're talking about. So I think it would be unfair to come up and say, hey, this is a second siren. So your question is good. Thank you for your question. Other discussion items? Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Ryan.
I just, if, if we're going to go out through the process of purchasing, purchasing a siren, I don't think the best answer is, well, we're just going to put it on city property because, because it doesn't cost us anything in the, in the electrical and to have the land and all that kind of thing. I, I just would have a feeling that there potentially would be a better place, much further east and north than Twin Lakes Park, where in theory it would cover Twin Lakes as well as more of the northeast part of the city. And so I just don't think that it's worth, worth, it would be worth investigating where is the better, the best place, the best place for a siren, not necessarily the most convenient. And certainly, I, it would be, I haven't seen that study either, so if, if there is that study, it'd be good to get copies of it to go, where is it recommended to put that, to put that other siren, to put the other sirens, because, you know, even I hear the siren from here at my, at my place, so that's whatever.
So in the resolution, does it state where it's going?
No, it's, Mr. Mayor, it actually states it on the quote.
From Readymore, right?
From Readymore, yeah. That was the only place that I read.
If you look at the resolution, where it's written, it's not indicating location. So here's, here would be what I'd like to do, one, I would like to move forward with the resolution not specifying the location and the location to be addressed. So then we can view the study, ask Chief that question. I'm, I'm not the expert on it, so I, I think your questions are valid.
Also, Mr. Mayor, if we're looking at using excess funds, I would rather have this discussion when we talk about the budget, not just have it be, you know, so we can go through the budget in general to go, okay, what are, what is the best place to, to use the excess funds, whether, regardless of how much, how much the amount is? Is it, is it in the siren, or is it to where we talked about for reducing the levy, or funding turnout here, or whatever other things?
Let me ask Ms. Jaeger that question. So Ms. Jaeger, if you were to take that same question and say, hey, right now we're looking at, same, purchasing this year and taking it out of the budget for 2026, this, well, you'd have to put $25,000 in the budget. Does it matter if we do it now, or should we look at waiting and put it in the budget and purchase it in February? Does it matter?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, currently I'm projecting that you'll, you're still going to use, with, with this $14,000 purchase, you would still be using about $20,000 of fund balance in 2025. You did budget to use $71,000, so you're under budget overall, but unfortunately, your, your revenues are not as, as high as they were anticipated to be, so even though your expenditures are under budget, your revenues are also under budget, so your net is that you would still be using fund balance in 2025, regardless. And so it wouldn't matter if you moved this to 26, because you would, if we budgeted in 26, you'd still be using the fund balance to pay for this.
Mr. Mayor.
House Member Ryan.
It just seems that if there is going to be a surplus of funds where we wouldn't necessarily have to use fund balance, that if we were having a discussion, when we're talking about budgeting, not just kind of putting this together in one, one line at them, so we can determine if there's a surplus of $100,000 or whatever the exact amount is, is it, are we going to use fund balance? Do we spend it on the sirens? Do we don't have to use fund balance? Do we offset the fund balance? Do we split it up? There's a lot of discussions that can happen around that instead of, instead of trying to figure all this out tonight.
Ms. Jaeger, there's an explanation to that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's, we're, we do not have a surplus of $100,000. It's that the, the money that you budgeted, you are under your budget for expenditures, but at the same time, you are under budget for revenues, and so you are still using fund balance, which you did plan on doing in 2025. Now, without this expense, you'll just use less fund balance in 2025. So my recommendation is frankly to budget, look at it, like you say, for a, a budget item in, in, in 2026, and determine maybe paying for it out of capital funds, or, or using fund balance in 2026 to, to, to pay for it.
House Member Glazer, what? Ms. Jaeger, would you please quantify the shortfall of revenue from resident taxes?
So in my projection right now is that the, you budgeted to have, let's see, $2,393,000 in revenue, and you are only getting $2,330,000. So you're under budget by $40,000 in revenue.
It's $63,000, right? I, I thought it was sixty.
Sixty, sixty thousand, I'm sorry, $60,000, yes. But you are also under budget.
Is it 63,000 or what?
It's 29, $2,393,000 versus $2,331,000. And, and again, this is just a projection, and I know it's a pretty good projection because it's at, you know, in November that we're making this projection, but it is still a projection, so this is not guaranteed, but it's about $60,000 that you're under the budget for revenue, but you're under budget by $120,000 in expenditures currently.
So basically, though, it's a net of $38,000.
Right. But you're spending $2 million, your shortfall is because you're, you're spending more than you're, you're getting in, you're spending $2,351,000, so you're spending $20,000 more than you planned on, than, than your revenue has, even though in 2025 you budgeted to spend $72,000, so you're actually under the net budget by $52,000. Well, now, we're just talking budget here, so, but you are going to use $20,000 in fund balance if you buy this siren. If you don't, then you'll use, well, $5,000 or $14,000 less. And if that's not confusing enough, but this is a better thing to discuss, like you say, during our budget process. It's not about, you know, you can buy it, if you want to buy it, you know, buy it, because you have the budget to do it, but you can also do it in 26, it's totally up to you.
And, Mr. Mayor.
House Member Ryan.
We don't have to make this decision tonight, we can, we have six more weeks of 2025, if we really want to do it, after we get a better handle on where we are from a budget.
Sheriff Patel, Chief comes in, so we can talk about location?
I was just going to make a motion to table.
Okay.
Your favor say, aye? Aye? Okay, table, done. Too many questions, and Chief's not here.
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on, Sheriff's Department. Sheriff, will you come up and give us the monthly report?
I sure will. Mr. Mayor, members of the council and city staff, following is the sheriff's office report for the month of October 2025. Deputies responded to 134 calls for service. Of those calls, nine to bar none, there are alarm calls, 15 medicals, and 12 animal calls. We'll do the Reader's Digest, first, but bar none, because it seems to be pretty much the same thing every month, but those numbers have remained steady, so. On the fifth, runaway juvenile call, on the sixth, a phone call threat report from a staff member, on the ninth, two disorderly juveniles, on the 12th, four juvenile runaways, on the 15th, a mental health call, on the 20th, another disorderly call where one was arrested for fifth degree assault, and another was cited for disorderly conduct. On the 25th, another disorderly call, on this one, one juvenile was transported on a pole, another was charged with fifth degree assault, disorderly conduct, fourth degree damage to property, and mistreatment of an animal. Might be curious on that one, she threw a lizard at a staff member, tried to use a lizard as a weapon. On the 27th, a phone call report for assault between two juveniles, for that one, one was charged with fifth degree assault, and on Halloween, a mental health call. Moving on to other calls for service around Nalden, on the 11th, in the 18900 block of Nalden Boulevard, deputies responded for an intoxicated female having a mental health crisis. Deputies had responded there multiple times over a short period of time. The female was eventually transported to the hospital by ambulance on emergency hold. On the 12th, deputy responded for a single vehicle crash that damaged public property, and the driver had left the scene. The deputy was able to verify who the driver was and cited him for leaving the scene of the crash. On the 18th, in the 8300 block of Viking, deputies responded for multiple burglary reports at the storage unit, several units were burglarized there, there's no suspects at this time, but it remains under investigation. On the 24th, in the 5900 block of Norris Lake Road, deputies responded for a single vehicle crash where the vehicle was partially submerged in a swamp. Deputies were able to assist the driver and passenger to safety, they were both transported to the hospital by ambulance for evaluation, and the driver was ultimately charged for criminal vehicle operation and child endangerment due to her driving conduct. On the 26th, that Viking and Ba, deputy located a vehicle that was stolen out of our county. The deputies performed a high-risk stop on that vehicle and took the female, however, in custody without incident. That female was turned over to Anoka PD, which is where the vehicle was stolen out of for charging. One other note, there's been a large amount of suicidal deer on the roads, so be sure to be on the lookout for that, should you encounter a suicidal deer. Hit the brakes, don't swerve in the oncoming traffic, we do have a handful of those all the time, people swerving to miss them.
Is there a help for such deer?
Right there. Hopefully deer season got the numbers for what we're supposed to do. With that, I can say it for your questions.
No, we appreciate you, sir, thanks for taking care of this, and keep my, suicidal deer. All right, Ms. Johnson, you're up. Pick up things.
Okay. I just have the report, I've finished most of the evaluations, I've got three left to do. The population signs have gotten updated by, or will be getting updated by Anoka County if they have not already with the correct population. They will not put our logo on it because it's a county line, so, but at least they've agreed to go out and fix the population numbers.
Thank you for working on that.
Yep, that was, I put Gilly on that project, so she was able to get that. The 2026 poll, overtime policy, leave policy, all of that documentation was emailed to you guys on Friday for your review, and then we'll be discussing it on the 28th with Lori, when we're talking about the budget. And city security systems and access, after we found out that our security system on our wall is like too old for them to even like get into to program, I was aware, or right had been brought to my attention of that we can get a system where we can actually program like Airbnb's, where you can say, okay, well, Mr. Glazer, you can have the code access to the historic town hall from noon until four o'clock. It will unlock it noon, and it will lock it four o'clock. It will reduce the time of having to give all the keys out for many different places, the shelters, even like the baseball stuff that we could do. I do have a quote that we're working on, and I'm probably not going to do all of it at once, but I will tell you, we looked at the master key earlier, I can't remember earlier this year or last year, but the cost was exorbitant to try and get a masterpiece so we didn't have to have so many keys. This definitely seems like a much better option and a bit more cost-effective, so it is something that I will hopefully have numbers for a capital improvement when we talk with Lori on the 28th. I'm hoping to have it all finished by then. I just wanted to make you guys aware that we are doing that, but it's because our system is so old in that building, that I'm having trouble getting new codes in for our new people. One other thing that's not on there that has been an issue last week, and again, now this week, is people dumping. And I don't know, Lieutenant, if it's something that you could ask our guys to watch out for, to, you know, today the guys picked up cabinets, blinds, carpet pads, a bathroom sink, some tires, right off the Twin Lake Parkway, they also picked up a fridge, that needs, or I'm sorry, that one needs to get picked up tomorrow because I didn't get to that today. The other thing that they're picking up are dumping of deer carcasses from the hunters that have just dumped them. I don't know if they picked up four, I suppose, in one area today, and it's costing the city, it's our time, it's our equipment, and it's our dumpsters. So basically, I kind of like the residents, and we may do a post on Facebook and just say, hey, if you're seeing somebody do it, get their license plate numbers so that we can get it to the sheriff's department, because it's costing the city just quite a bit of money, and they, it just seems like they've been doing so much. In one area, we even have landscape rock dumped with a bunch of like pond poly in it, and they just haven't had a chance to be able to take equipment out there to scoop it up and get it cleaned up. So just making you guys aware of that, and maybe any public that is listening, if you see or anybody doing it, if we could try to get some license plate numbers.
Yeah, if you have locations, certainly pass them along to me, and have the guys do some extra patrols and try and keep an eye out of the specific spots that are recurring.
Yeah, it just seems like it's been a lot lately.
Well, there, there was one, some furniture dumped in, in the yard behind my house, which you wouldn't think that, it didn't seem like a logical place, but somebody did it.
Yeah, and that one I asked, is anybody, can you look at that dresser to see if it's have any value to anyone? Because maybe put on the free note, you know, at least try to look at it that way, but, if people are, my mom had a statement, it was trash hitters, it's trash people that do that, it's just.
We just say, if, if you see something, say something. That's the biggest thing we can do, try to make sure residents are, are keeping their eyes out, and we appreciate the extra patrols, if you have a, any target in the area, so we can take them like that. All right, thanks, Ms. Johnson, we're going on a new business number 9A.
Mr. Mayor, if we were to go, are you really meeting Thanksgiving Friday?
No, it's Wednesday.
That's the 26th?
Oh, the 26th, sorry.
Just double checking.
Was it reset eight o'clock?
Okay, yeah, sorry, I'm mistaken.
We need to look at our.
No, it's, it's, 26th is Wednesday, and here it says the 28th, so I'm just double checking.
Yes, Wednesday. I apologize.
And are we just looking at right hand up for security, or have we talked to Arvin, or the, the company that did the, the other, the cameras?
IPS?
Yes.
No. Staff does not recommend that.
Okay, I'm just curious to, looking at anybody, looking at anybody else.
Yeah, um, I could.
That would be work.
I could look at, yeah, I could look at Arvin, I would, I'd be all right with that, to see what's out there.
I have another company that I work with, that work, I could recommend them, like, they have a decent job, I don't know, all costs competitive.
Yeah, that would be great.
I just can't remember my name right now, I'll send it to you tomorrow. Okay.
Thank you.
Number 9A? All right, first one is the, the safety glass for the city office. Ms. Johnson, you want to talk about it? Looks like Chief wrote it up, but it's also submitted by yourself, want to touch base on this?
Yeah, this is a situation that kind of came up after having a, kind of an upset, resident had come into the off, into the office, and the chief was there, and he kind of said, where is our safety here? And we don't really, you know, there really isn't a lot of safety for the front, and with the world being the way that it's been, he suggested we get a copy, or, I'm sorry, get some quotes to figure out what it would be, to get some glass there, maybe reinforce the door, just for the safety of it. He also said that he would help do the installation of it, so it saves on some of that. We did get a couple of bids, we did get a third bid with, to go with actual bulletproof glass, but that was way out of our budget, so we would like to go with the 1740 with North Metro glass if council feels it is necessary.
Mr. Mayor. House Member Glazer, so just, two questions, first one I would curious, how much was the ballistic glass?
It was well over $10,000.
My other question is, are, the two quotes that we have from North Metro Glass and JNA Glass, the, the spec is different. So JNA glass is, is half inch tempered glass, and North Metro is quarter inch. Is, is quarter inch sufficient as, as a deterrent? And I, I guess I would prefer, if, if we want quarter inch, I'd like both contractors to pick the same, the same product, spec the same material.
I'd prefer half inch, quarter inch, let's go half inch.
So, so my question is, can, can we, can we table this with, at the request of? So, so my question is, can, can we, can we table this with, at the request of finding out what North Metro is going to charge us for, for half-inch glass and?
Yeah. And, yeah, our thoughts were just to deter, I, I don't think, I don't know if, if, I should ask you, would a half-inch glass do any difference than a quarter-inch glass with something coming through it?
Well, I mean, you're really doing it just for the barrier if you're not getting ballistic, so. I mean, it's going to be a little bit harder for someone to smash, but if somebody wants to smash glass, they're going to smash it, so.
And, and maybe it's something that we just kind of hold up on, and if we're going to do it, do it right with the ballistic glass later down the road.
I don't know, it's going to take a grand, but there's polycarbonate. It's very durable, and instead of going with glass, it doesn't break.
Poly, what?
Polycarbonate, poly.
Like Lexan?
Yes, there you go. It's like Lexan. So I think a quote for that might be, I don't see maybe any more. It might be a little bit more. Don't know, but that, that doesn't break. It literally is very, very durable.
Lieutenant, have you seen any of that?
Yeah, we probably see that more than glass these days. I would agree, that's probably a better option for what you're talking about.
So Lexan is going to be your typical material that you fly in hockey breaks? So.
That seems a pretty big.
Yeah, that type of material would be pretty useful for what you're looking for.
Well, I guess we'll have to do a search for that. Thank you for that, because it's.
Anything is breakable, don't get me wrong, so. It's not home-proof, it's not, but.
Yeah.
We had, not here, but at another office I worked in, we had three cans of green beans for the glass. Green beans? Yeah, cans of green beans.
Food, well, food drive? They were upset about the food drive right here. All right, so we are going to table nine A. Everybody good with that?
Yep. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, can I have a request?
Yes.
Could we do the Comcast update so Lori can get off if she wants? Would that be all right? So K, the four K that we are moving?
Yeah, which we currently have is nine each.
Yeah.
It's council good with that. Thanks.
Would that be all right?
Yes.
Lori, can you pull up the map for us, please?
Right. Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
She's going to pull up the map, so this one, Evan, you want to touch base on it?
Yeah, the mayor and I met with Comcast for our quarterly meeting. I don't think it's a surprise that, you know, we're still a little bit behind schedule, but they are doing their absolute best to kind of get caught up. Comcast is still a bit behind from the storms and trying to get all the posts done, and if you look, there is a ton of work going on, and the polls are going up. I mean, there's equipment out there. I saw it after dark. We went on my way home last night. So I think that they're doing everything they can, but because it's subsidized, we have to have an extension of our contract.
As soon as the map comes up, I think that's the important piece, is you have a subsidized area to talk about.
Are you able to find it, Lori? It's right in your packet, and it's in the consent of the.
Page seventy-two, maybe?
Page seventy-two.
I found the map, but there's, my share screen is not turned on. Oh, it says, both along the area for this meeting.
Okay, try now.
Good. Now it is. Can you see it?
Not yet. There we go.
Give you a quick explanation on this. So we had, we had the meeting last week with them. They were finishing up the area in red, projected to finish up by the end of last week. They're setting poles up here in the pink area. I think their timeline was the middle of, middle to third week of November, having it complete, and then they were going to shift over to this white area. So the biggest concern was that they probably will get that completed. This is all subsidized here. Until you hit the area in yellow, and again, just as David mentioned that, if you take a look, Conexus is working their tail off and getting poles up. Comcast is right behind them, stringing it up. The concern is the subsidized area, they've got it projected out, and you'd say Arvin is in that area, but it's not complete. Not everybody has Arvin running their house, so it's not that unsubsidized area, so it's last on the list. They believe they'll finish this up. I think that the majority of Nowland will all be complete except the, the sub, the non-subsidized area. And that's really what this, this resolution is about, is to approve an extension on it. They're going to continue to work, but if they get through ground freeze and they can't get through it, they're going to not get through the unsubsidized area this year. Is that covered pretty much everything we talked about?
It pretty much is. I, you know, I just want the, to understand that they are still trying, although we have to, we have to do this extension, and if they can't get to it, depending upon how long a frost stays in the ground, we'll make it dependent, which is why we've got to go up to six months. But they are trying.
Yes, they, they do a very good job of providing a good update. That's a summary of their update. In here in your packet in sixty-nine talks about how many poles are set, how many miles are done. You're working diligently to continue to have customers and get, get all the Nowland residents complete. But with that, here comes the, it's a request for council action to approve, well, approve the city Nowland to execute the broadband development agreement, First Amendment, which is to extend it six months.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember, right.
Make a motion to execute the broadband development agreement with Comcast Cable Communications to, well, the First Amendment to the development here.
Second. Lots of seconds on this one also. Very important.
Who's taking that one, so I can get it?
I don't need credit.
Run it by her, don't fight.
And the other discussion on this one. Here it is. Let's move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion cares. Okay, that's the part.
All right, thanks, Lori.
Thanks, Ms. Edgar. So the four K is done, we no longer have the nine H. All right, moving on to the next one. Nine B, which is on page.
One twenty-seven.
One twenty-seven, thank you. So this one is submitted by Sue Pilon, who runs a Nowland Heritage Festival. I'm sure you guys will all agree with this. Is there any questions or any discussions on it?
Mr. Mayor, is this, are we asking for a motion, or is this just?
We, we are asking because it, it needs to be approved, at least.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember, right.
What I was looking through is, we don't have a resolution of the, of the resolution.
I can have staff create one. I just didn't come from this pilot, Pilon. If it's something on, how would I?
Can we do the, can we, I suppose we've got to have a resolution on paper before we do it.
Mr. Mayor, let's say we can make a motion to continue our support for the Heritage Fest next year, and if we need a resol, we need to make it an actual resolution, we can do that at another time.
I, I, I would be good with that.
That will be my motion.
Second. Okay, done. Any discussion? I would like to add one comment. So, and I agree with doing this. I think there's a lot of volunteer time, and it's, it's a great thing for our city. I would like to take where the city booth is right now, or where it was this year, and move it much closer to Mantry Way, and, and have us all man the booth, so if there's questions, so there's access to the council members. I think what we did this year was a benefit. I mean, we had residents come up and talk to us, not all of us, but, but I think that was beneficial. So if you guys would be okay with that, but it needs to be much closer to where they sell T-shirts, maybe it's right next door, something like that. That would be my only recommendation.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I will say that we used to have the booth over there, and we got ninety percent more activity where we were this year than we did over by the T-shirt booth.
Yeah, when you told me that, I was surprised, but I, that's not part of the, my, that was not part of my responsibilities, so I never tracked that.
Yeah, it was huge. I talked to more people this year than I had in the first three years I did it.
All right, that was my request. I'll leave up the booth location to yourself, you determine the best location, just so we're not stuck in the corner. Okay, ready for a vote? All those in favor of the sport, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion cares. The whole resolution. All right, next one up. Councilmember Glazer, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, I, I put forth this, RCA, as a discussion item pertaining to flying the state flag at Nowland City Offices. It was brought to my attention in the last, let's see, I spent some time with Kirk Johnson last Wednesday or Thursday, and, and asked some questions. It was brought to my attention by a resident that the, the flag had changed from what we're calling, I guess calling the historical Minnesota flag to the newly adopted Minnesota flag by a state commission. And my first question was, why did we switch? And I was told that a Nowland resident filed a complaint that we weren't following state law. So the, the first thing I'd like to say in regards to that is, is by state law, city offices are not required to fly the, the state flag. It is only a requirement to fly illegally at state-owned buildings, offices, and, for instance, the state Capitol. The, the reason I bring this up is because our new state flag is a controversial subject. There's, there's a lot of folks in the state of Minnesota that are unhappy about this flag. I did take the time to, there were two non-voting members from the Republican minority at the time. I spoke to one, one was out of the country on military service, but I, I did speak to both of their assistants, and I spoke to Rep. Olson's assistant, and he clearly stated that, that it was very much a partisan effort on the part of the governor. The Senator Druskowski's assistant went into greater detail as far as the fact that there's a lot of, a conflict within the commission, some different opinions, some opinions that, that were heard more loudly. And then, third, I'd like to say that there were a couple of ex-post that, of our governor that pertained to this flag. He referred to our previous flag as being racist. And he also, he also very clearly stated that it was the, the Democrat majority that pushed this. It was a, it was a partisan effort. So on that note, being the fact that it is not required by state law to fly the state flag, if we can't be in agreement, if the residents don't get to choose, my preference would be that we not fly the flag.
Mr. Mayor, is that, is that your request?
That, that, that's, that's my request in this discussion, you know, about flying the the state flag, whether it's the, whether it's the oldest or flag, or whether it's newly adopted flag by the, the commission that is put here.
Go ahead, Councilmember Swenson.
Yeah, I guess my thoughts on it, we only have one state flag. We don't get a vote on it. You know, they had a commission on it, they voted on it, it was with the state. We have one state flag now. Either, I mean, I don't even know what the debate is. It's, it's one state flag. We don't get a vote of it. Even if, if there are hard feelings on it, and it was passed, you know, with more votes from one party than the other, it doesn't change the fact that it is still the state flag. And I understand it is not state law that we have to hang it, but I, I don't see why we would hang something that's not the Minnesota state flag. I, I would think either you hang the Minnesota flag or you don't. You don't hang the old version of it that's not even the state flag.
Mr. Mayor? So his request was to not hang the state flag. What's your request?
Not hang it, but I, I think it's important to point out, Councilmember Swenson, that there weren't any voting members from the conservative side of the government, on the commission appointed by the government. So the, the conservatives in the state of Minnesota had, the, the, you know, some of the people that are represented on our flag are sportsmen, farmers, not just, and I, I recognize that the indigenous people are, are on the flag, and there was, there was a, what I was told by Senator Druskowski's assistant is that there was a very small portion of the Dakota Nation, the Minnesota Dakota Nation, that was, you know, speaking out about the, the racial aspect of the flag. There were other, other indigenous nations that did not share that same opinion. So the fact that the commission did not represent the whole of Minnesota is, to me, is, is an issue. It was very much a partisan commission. And what, there was, there was no bipartisan opportunity.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember, ready.
So I have a question, Councilmember Glazer. Let's say the shoe's on the other foot, and Republicans are in charge next year, and they redesign it, and there are no Democrats on it. Are we going to stay with the same policy that says, because there were no Democrats on it, like there were no Republicans on it, we don't fly anything?
It's not, it's not a requirement by law for the city to fly the state flag. So if, if we can't agree on the flag as, as a council and a city, because I think, personally, I think the residents should have a say. It's their city. We don't need to fly the flag at all. We, you know, we fly the, our federal flag. You know, we fly the POWMI Association flag over here underneath the, you know, the national banner, but.
I guess I didn't get to answer to my question, that's fine.
I did answer the question, Councilmember Glazer. I said if we can't agree, agree on it regardless of what the flag is, we don't have, we shouldn't fly it.
That wasn't my question. My question was, are you okay with if it's a Republican flag versus a Democratic flag? But you're not okay if it's a Democratic flag and a Republican flag. But we are, it's my opinion, we're a nonpartisan body here, and politics shouldn't come into it, but if we can't determine that we would fly the state flag, whether we like it or not, then we should not fly the flag, which I can use in front of the, the state, but that's my opinion.
Mr. Mayor?
Because we're responsible.
Yeah, I mean, we're in the state of Minnesota. We are Minnesotans. We're a city in Minnesota, and that is our flag. You referenced, I believe, the, the Act or the state law that, that said that is, is our state flag. I mean, we don't get a vote of it. This has nothing to do with the city of Nowland. This is, you know, this is some political debate based on, you know, hard feelings that, that's totally partisan. I mean, it is the state flag. It is a state flag. Why, why would we not hang the Minnesota state flag? We're a city in Minnesota.
There are, there are multiple municipalities that are continuing to fly the old flag. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not sitting here saying that we should fly the old flag. But there's no law requiring us to fly the state flag. And, and this was very much a partisan effort. This is, this is a partisan, this is a partisan issue in the state, whether, whether we as a council are partisan or bipartisan. This is a, this was a partisan issue within the state, and seventy, seventy percent of our voters in both precincts voted conservative in the general election. So my question is, why, why does one resident's complaint, which wasn't valid because it wasn't, it, it wasn't based on state law, why does one, one resident's complaint trump everybody else, everybody else's opinions about this issue?
Because one is the state flag and one's not.
We don't have to fly it, Councilmember Swenson.
Yeah, then make, then Councilmember Glazer, make a motion to what you want, and we'll vote it out there.
Does you have any discussion? Councilmember, Brian, you want to agree?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, it's, I don't, I don't want to, it, it, it seems like there was some contention over, you know, I, I agree. One resident is saying, well, we need to do this. Well, if we didn't have to do that in the first place, then do we really need to make the change or have the discussion that we are tonight? But I also don't want this to be a, okay, we hang it, and, and then now we get residents saying, well, we don't want any flag at all. And then we take it down, and then we get more residents saying, no, we got to put it back up. If we just make a decision that, that if there's any contention, we, I, I agree with Councilmember Glazer, we don't have to fly any flag. We could easily put the POWMI flag up if we, if we wanted to in replacement, and then, and then, and leave it at that. So on that, I would make a motion to just not fly the Minnesota state flag at, in, on city property. It's second.
Any other discussion? Move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion does not pass.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Can I get clarification then? Am I supposed to have staff put it back up or put it back down?
It's the Minnesota state flag. It goes back up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next one. Council Administrator Stokoe submitted it. Now we want to talk about this.
I do. One of the goals that was set for the city was to try to update some of the signs. Many of the signs are non-reflective. What we have learned is that the smaller signs were made a different way and are much better reflected, but the state changed the law to go with the larger signs. Joe Public Works has shown me some of the signs that just fade away based upon where the sun is. It's kind of crazy to me that they would do that, but they did. So we have been, I had Delia cut the city into four, four quadrants. We've got eight, I think there's eight signs on this one, that we are working on trying to get the first quadrant up to date. What we've done is, she's been working on it, and Eric Public Works Mattson came in, and he said, you know, some of our neighboring cities have their logo on a sign. If we're going to replace signs, wouldn't it be nice to have our logo onto it? We did still have some money available in our sign budget, about nine hundred, I think it was nine hundred and fifty-five dollars in that. And we have, these few here will finish up quadrant number one. And then next year, we'll start working on number two, and then every fourth year, we'll hit it. What I did is have the sheriff go out and pick out the worst signs that were the least reflective or down or...
Or damaged.
Or damaged. One of the things that we're also doing, instead of saying dead end, we're going to say no outlet because it's smaller, so it costs those signs a little bit less. So we are just looking for is, would council like to move forward with using and having the Nowland logo put onto the signs, or should we just continue doing it without the logo? That's pretty much what I'm asking. It is a budgeted item, and we will continue to budget each year for each quarter to try to hit the worst signs. We are not in compliance with the state law right now, but we can't get in compliance with it, you know, in a year. So we're just gonna kind of just keep doing it quarter at a time.
So just say we put your signs up, like you said, this will take care of one quadrant. Does that put us in compliance, or every sign needs to be replaced to be in compliance?
To be in compliance, all the signs that are not the larger, newer signs were needed to be replaced. I believe if somebody came to us and we, I could show them that we're making an effort to move forward with that, I don't think there would be any kind of reprimand or anything from the state.
You do like your concept of breaking it down into quadrants, but if we're not in compliance, I would, I think we don't want to take four years. I think we could move a little quicker than that. Now, can we do it in a year? I don't, I'm not saying that we can. I don't know if we have enough Public Works time, but maybe two years instead of four years, something like that, to maybe speed up the timeline, and then we budget for 2026 accordingly?
And I could have, Ms. Yager could change that into the budget for discussions on the 26th.
I think bigger signs are better. I don't know about anybody else, but I'm not getting any younger. I go try to read the signs. I can't read them.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bryan.
I almost think these days, I could be wrong, and you might correct me if I am, but nobody's really, the signs are of less value than people are using maps on the phone. It's literally, here's the street, turn left. And I would agree that if eventually it's worth replacing. The question, I was just looking at this again and came up with, how much is each sign?
I think it was about thirteen dollars, isn't it?
Well, it says an extra thirteen cost.
Right, to put the logo on it.
So how much does a sign cost?
Just a...
It does not say.
Change because of the votes.
Really, our vote on this particular one is, do you put the Nowland symbol on?
It was, yeah. It was just the extra thirteen dollars per sign, but I can get the exact number because we didn't just pay, so.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. Sorry, Councilmember Swenson, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, if you did some math, and I was trying to get at it, if you did some math, you could figure out, by not spending the thirteen dollars, how much could that be towards an extra sign? I don't think, I don't see any value in putting the city logo on signs if we're trying to figure out how to replace them. I would rather...
It actually shrinks the amount of visible space that you can read it, so, but I think it does exactly the opposite of what I'd like to see back there.
But it, I mean, the number size doesn't change. It's still reflective, and you don't really need the city of Nowland logo to be reflective as part of this charting sign. And I'd rather put that cost into actual signs than having to put, spend the extra thirteen dollars per sign to, when we replace that.
Councilmember Blazer. Mr. Mayor, I guess, I would like to propose that we table this for the purpose of quantifying the number of signs that the city actually needs, so that we can do a good job of budgeting in order to be in compliance with, I'm assuming, the state law. And following Councilmember, Councilmember Bryan's suggestion to omit the city of Nowland logo on the signs itself, it's thirteen dollars per sign that we don't need to spend.
Do you have any idea how many signs we have in Nowland?
I do not. I do not. I know that they have been, like I said, replacing everything in the first quadrant to bring us with what we, what we could. I will, I know Delia does have a chart for each quadrant, so if I have to have the sheriff go back and check all the smaller signs.
But it won't even be checked. It's to count the number, because going off of Councilwoman Blazer said, it's, if you want to budget this, it's replace all the signs, get them in compliance, because nothing is in compliance.
No, and some of them are the big signs, because as they were getting replaced, they were getting replaced with the big signs. So if there was a crash, it got replaced with a big sign. So I don't know how many of those are already updated, so what I would have to do is get a number of all the ones that have not been.
How about this? You get the total number of signs, we could overbudget, because you might have some that to replace.
Perfect.
So then we know what the cost is, and then we can talk about it.
Perfect.
But I would, I would agree. Go ahead, Councilmember.
The questions I have are, she's got forty-two by nine and forty-eight by nine. What is the size we're required to make, which I have? So what are we required in size?
I believe it's a forty-two by nine.
Okay.
We'll have the...
I need to check out that though. And then, second is, this, we know our collectivity is expected to last ten years, according to Earl F. Anderson. Who's Earl F. Anderson?
That's the company that makes the signs.
Okay. Have you gone to any other sign companies? Does the county do them?
The county, yeah.
They used to. I don't know. And Sherburne County at one time, years back, said they do our science for us, but I don't know the cost involved, and they're still doing, you know, still operating.
Right. And the county does have their own sign department, but they weren't willing to do all the signs for us. She did check with them. Earl F. Anderson is the preferred vendor with the state.
With the state, okay.
Do those quotes. I could have her check with Sherburne County to see if that's something that they would do for us. We did not check with Sherburne, but we did not go.
Let's see, is another county's gonna do something for us?
At one time, they offered it.
Pay them, they will.
They have their own sign shop.
Pay them, they will.
Yeah.
Oh, they have their own sign shop now.
Yes, they have their own sign shop, so, like Anoka does.
Right, Anoka has their own sign shop. Like, they made all of our population signs and put our logo on it. They did do that.
Sherburne County did?
No, I know Anoka did that. I know their county did do that.
No's are free. Ask the question, please.
Yeah, and some of the cities actually have their own sign company, you know, sign departments and make them all themselves, so.
So are we agreed to table this one? Do we get to come back with costs? Everybody good with that?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
All right, table, officially table. All right, now we're on E, which is the approval of Resolution 2025, Accepting Reservation for Retirement for Jill Blazer effective 20 January 2026. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Go for it, Ray.
There's no discussion. I need to approve the resolution, accepting the resignation for retirement.
I'll second.
Excuse me. Don't waste time. Anyway.
I think I heard a second? There. Got a second. Any other discussion? Okay, move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that was E. Next one is F. Ms. Johnson. This is the open position.
Yes, and my request is that we move fairly quickly on this so that we can get some applications in. My request is that I would get two council members and possibly be able to reach out to, like, the Grove, or maybe the city of Nowland, and have a Public Works member come in and give us some guidance too on some of the things that we would need. The suggestion is to go with just a Public Works employee versus a supervisor, and really get down for the first year or eighteen months of what are they actually doing, and how do we get everything into safety compliance in the shop and some of the equipment, and get a real good idea of where we are. And then, my idea to them was to give them a big calendar, and then every day, they'll kind of tell us what they did. I mean, I know pretty much what they do every day, but I don't know the details of it, where they could sit down for a few minutes at the end of the day and talk with one of the other staff members or write it down legedly, and we can figure out what they do every quarter, such as like the end of the year here, and the end of October, beginning of November, they serviced all of the equipment, and they put away all the summer stuff, got everything ready for winter, so the summer will be ready to go, the different tree trimmings of when that should be done. I did learn the history of that. Years ago, a mayor told them that we didn't have any trees in the right-of-way, so they did not cut trees for I don't know how many years. It was quite a few. Do you recall?
I do not.
Because I couldn't figure out, why do we have such big trees in our right-of-way if we've been brushing all along? So anyway, that was why.
So ma'am, could you line up the interviews sort of like back-to-back, so if a council member comes in to do this, they can take, serve them all the time off, or whatever the case is.
But I'm also looking for guidance on the wages and where we start with that, which is why I wanted to bring another city in too, so what that range should be. Because we don't have a step chart, I don't really have a range as to where that should start. And I would like to have a recommendation from two on the council and maybe another city, so that we get sure we're competitive to try to get.
Two things. Before you post a position, you have to put a pay range on it.
Right.
So that has to be determined before you can post this.
Right.
So one, we could look at approving it under the concept that you would determine reviewing other cities' wages and impose a wage range. That would make sense. But that can't be approved tonight because we don't have a wage range. So this is to approve the, open the position.
See, open the position.
And then you're gonna write the job description, make sure that's up to date, and...
The job description is attached. I don't think a whole lot of that had changed. We did add a couple little things to it. It's just the range more so that I'm concerned about is to make sure that we're going to be in the right range to be able to get something. And if we go entry level, I mean, we have to require a CDL. We should require some snow plowing experience, that kind of a thing, is my recommendations or thoughts. Does council have any ideas? And, you know, maybe I'm totally going the wrong direction. I'd like some...
You're not going the wrong direction, but ideally for us to approve this, we're looking at, we have the pay range. You're gonna need it. So the question is, do we shelf this, and when is the next time we're getting together?
Well, it'll be the budget meeting on the twenty-sixth. And if we could sit down, yeah, I would like to just be able to, no, I would just like to be able to say, yes, we can move quickly on this if I can talk to two council members and get a couple of cities, you know, entry level, mid-range. I do have some of those steps, so that we can get a recommendation, so it's not just me coming back and saying, I believe this is the range it should be, because whatever that range should be, should be what applies to the other Public Works employees as well.
That's my concern right now. I don't think we can prove this tonight, because we don't, we need the range. So it takes a little bit of data mining to figure out what should be the range. If you bring back the proposal, this is the range. Then I think we can approve this. It's not that I don't want to, but you can't post without a wage range.
No, but I would like to.
And that has to fit within the line for our city.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bryan.
So it sounds like we're looking, that Clark Johnson's looking for two council members to help out with figuring out the range.
So it's not just my opinion?
Oh, yeah, actually, so...
Yes, I was...
So once that's done, that...
Okay, not, not...
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, I understand.
And I would say, in a pinch, if we need to, we need a special meeting to get this posted. We've done that before for certain things. I can do that.
Thank you for the clarification.
I think that's where we're trying to go.
That is exactly what it is.
So if I were to write it?
Yes.
No, I think, well, I wouldn't have done that either, but it came out in the discussion tonight, that I think that's where we're going. So if that's what we're doing...
I understand.
Because this is saying authorize the job posting, so I think, yeah. So I certainly would be willing to offer mine, to offer to help out with that, if we're looking for two people.
Yeah, with like, you know, two council members, because they can help make the recommendation to council as to what that would be. I just don't want to do anything that's, I just, whatever the range that we choose, it needs to apply to our current employees.
I will volunteer to help. Nobody else is volunteer.
I will volunteer as well.
Go ahead, you volunteer instead.
Dan, Dan.
Okay.
Bring me back here Thursday. That'd be perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so after this meeting, can we set up a time to make a quick Zoom call or something? Thank you.
Okay, so we need to approve this thing? Do you have any motion?
I'll just make a motion to, that council approves having Councilmember Swenson and Councilmember Bryan help out, or Johnson figuring out a salary range and any other issues that need to be resolved, so that the position can be posted.
All right, I'll second that motion. Fantastic. We summarize. Okay, any discussion? All right, move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Is that the last one?
No. Maybe the culvert.
The attorney.
Culvert.
Culvert.
Culvert, then attorney.
Okay.
Oh, you moved it?
No, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Please go ahead.
The reason I moved this, I have a question. My first question is, why do we only have one quote from one excavation contractor that places a culvert?
That is the one that Joe was able to get for me in a very quick fashion because of the lead of them.
So I contacted two other contractors that have done work for the city before, and neither one of them were actively contacted.
Yeah, and Joe took care of it.
So my question is, our typical practice is not to take only one quote from a contractor when it applies to city work. Why do we do that?
I think you gotta be careful of that. I think, because there's a dollar mark that says, if it's over this, you have to do it, but I think it's under twenty-five thousand, we don't. So I think it's not a requirement. No, is it a best practice?
And that's the issue that I have, Mr. Mayor. I don't, I don't think, I think we need to, our, change practices, so, when it comes to things like this. Not that Dave Perkins Contracting is a bad company. They've obviously done good work for the city before, but we have other very good, reputable contractors that are residents, longtime residents of the city of Nowland, and I would like to see more contractors reach out to in the future, and work like this.
So are you good with this one, or are you talking in the future?
Well, it's, we've kind of, we're kind of in a tough spot, because Perkins' information is not public as far as what their estimate is. So to go out to other contractors, it's just not fair to Perkins anymore, and the culvert has to be replaced. But best practice is for the city of Nowland as far as, I feel, that it needs to change.
Do you have a dollar mark that you want to do that at?
So maybe you look at it and say, for everything, we should have two quotes? I mean, you could say that? Now, when it's under like five thousand dollars, sometimes it's very difficult to get a second quote, or sometimes you just can't. And, you know, give you an example for security, you can get ten quotes to that, but you're gonna get some specialized things that you can't. So just as a general practice, a second quote would be very helpful, because just like you did on...
Public works. Yeah.
And if I could add to that, Mr. Mayor, if I could be included in how we develop that best practice, because how we put out a specification, I spoke, one of the contractors that I spoke to, you know, his, the way he typically bids things is, he includes, you know, other necessary items that the other contractors may not be getting asked to include. So I think we need some input from some of those contractors as far, as far as what they typically get from other cities as far as how to create a proposal for.
And that definitely could be something that changes with Public Works. Thank you. So if we...
Do we need to vote on this, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Because we pulled it up.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blazer.
I make a motion to approve the Resolution 2025, Accepting Quote with Culvert Repair into the side trail on Marble Street. Due to the fact that this culvert is fair.
Okay. Any other discussion? Move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Everybody said aye. Everybody said aye, aye. Okay, last one, Ms. Johnson. This is just more informational votes.
No, this is, I need approval if this is what we wanna, if we still wanna go forward with it. Earlier this year, you asked me to get together for our request for proposal for our attorneys. I was doing so, I took a little bit of research with it. I worked with the League of Minnesota on this one because it's a little difficult to work with our own attorneys. I'm trying to come up with an idea. As we were going through this, and this is just my opinion and we will do whatever the council would like us to do. But I feel that we're working with, or it would be a significant amount on the ordinances and I believe it would cost a lot of money to bring another firm up to speed as to where we are. So my request is we hold off on the civil attorney for now until we can kinda get these things wrapped up. Or wait on both because we might get a better deal if we have one firm doing both prosecuting and civil. So the options are, I could still send it out for both and then just know that there might be consequences if we choose another firm. And, or send it out for just a prosecuting attorney and do civil at another time or just wait and do the full proposal later next year.
Councilmember Swenson, would you have a recommendation on this and what the best process is?
Um, I, I, I agree that I think we should stick with Ruby through the ordinance process. That already makes very little sense to switch and I can't imagine that we'd be. But I also think it makes sense to, I mean, I, I don't know what other cities do. The prosecutor, prosecutorial, the criminal and the civil, are they ever the same firm?
Yes, and I did call some of the cities around to see who they're using because I was figuring that those would be the firms that I would send it to since they're already familiar with Anoka County and the different law and court systems and some of the zoning issues that, that we have in this area.
I think it would make sense just to hold off on this until the ordinance stuff is in and put them off or propose, or probably out for bid right after that, all at the same time.
When do we believe the ordinance stuff to be wrapped up? Because we're talking a year-long project that's just starting. It hasn't even started yet.
Right, because the meeting will be Thursday.
That, that's just starting at that point, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Brian.
A question for clerk Johnson. I know in the past, we've literally had to have the mayor go on to Zoom calls with the prosecuting attorney to say, hey, I need to talk to you so we can at least get a bill. Are we still having issues with the current prosecuting attorney?
We are, we've been billed through May and I have not been able to get another bill.
So with that in mind, I think it wouldn't, it would be prudent to theoretically look at changing the prosecuting attorney from a city perspective so that we're getting our bills in a timely manner. We very well might, if we go out for bid just for prosecuting, we very well might, since we do put a lot of money to the prosecuting attorney, we theoretically might be able to take advantage of some reduced fees for the services that are being provided. So I would say it would be worth going out to bid for our prosecuting attorney. So that one, we're, we're, the city's getting invoiced in a timely manner. Theoretically, we're reducing services and we're not putting in any undue burden on our staff.
We did ask him, the prosecuting attorney, if he would do it monthly and we still haven't gotten. So that's sort of still a problem.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't know who's next.
The customer rate.
Customer rate.
I agree with council member Brian. We can go out for just the criminal piece and then when these other large projects are done, we can get the whole packet again. I know.
I was just gonna ask clerk Johnson, based on what you've given us in the packet, is the hard part done in order to put together the?
Uh, the hard part is done. And what I would do if we were gonna go just for prosecuting, I would just pull out. My original plan was to send out a nice cover letter that would ask for both services or one so that you could find out which is the better. Talking with other cities, it does seem like it's a, a, a better deal for the city if you are using the same firm. I know council member Brian said, you know, we use a lot of money for prosecuting. Unfortunately, we really don't. We do, but we don't.
Compared to the civil side?
Compared, no, compared to other cities as what they spend for prosecuting.
Oh, compared to other cities.
So we're just a tiny little fraction of their book of business. So that's one of the reasons I was told that our billing kinda gets pushed down to the bottom and such because we're just a little smi- small fish.
So does it hurt anything if we send out?
I'm sorry, well, I guess I just wanna finish.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would, I agree with councilmembers Brian, Rainbow that we should send this out.
Is there any negative going off what you just said? Any negative to go out for bid on both civil and prosecuting? Going out for bid, we don't have to make the selection.
This is how this is where we're at.
No, and we don't.
That was the intent, that's the exact intent, is just to say, hey, it gives us a benchmark of where we're at. We know the services have been very good. I'm gonna tell you, I'm very impressed with what we've got for services and just last night, the quick turnaround. But we don't know where we're at in comparison. We could go out and ask people, but that's what this is all about. It's a process to go through, even if you have good service, to go out and bid.
Okay.
That was the intent, okay?
Just go out for both services then?
I, I personally would.
I'm all right with that too, actually.
I mean, because I don't think it hurts anything. And then you can say, then we come back and say, all right, it does make sense for the civil or it does not. That's the way I would look at it, because then at, at least we're checking our costs.
So, excuse me. So clarify, we would ask them to bid in three fa- three manners. Criminal, civil and combination of both.
Yeah, and there are many law firms that only do one.
Right, that's our, and like, or maybe only do the, do the civil.
Right, and the ones that do two is kinda the ones that I was told may possibly give you a better, that deal because the prosecuting part of it is such a small part. It's a civil part that they're making money.
It comes back to the council before it even happens.
Absolutely, yeah.
Then we should review bids and then we can make the determination. Alright, so, do you need to make a motion? Is that just guidance that you're asking for?
Nope, I need to have a motion that tells me to go out for bid, please.
Alright, I'll make the motion. So, the motion is to send the RFP for attorney services out for both civil and prosecuting attorneys. Just a second.
Second.
Second from councilman Blazer, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's move to vote, all those in favor say aye, aye, aye. Opposed? I think everybody said aye, alright, motion carries.
Alright, you left it adjourned.
Second?
Second.
Any close?
Were you asking?